...annexation without people's vote. I think it's being ramrod down our throats and we had enough stuff this year ramrod down our throats we haven't liked. This past year, we have seen a functional city go into a dysfunctional city. We've seen a writ of mandate against the mayor, we've seen a recall, we've seen an annexation proposal, we've seen a disincorporation proposal, we've seen a freeze on hiring. We've had enough. And I firstly, right now, would like to say the mayor has to resign or quit or something. And everybody who agrees with me, I wish they'd stand up and show their hand for the news media. Walk your cameras along. I'm against the annexation. Thank you. By the way, I don't envy your guys' job one bit.
Tom Halsap, 537 Milwaukee Boulevard South. Proud to be in the city of Pacific. I see the team before me and I watch the one who is supposed to control this walk out. I'm against the annex. I want the city of Pacific to be the city of Pacific and I'm proud to be here. And I see everyone here and you're here because you care. And there was a comment in a movie called Apollo 13. Failure is not an option. It is not an option. And we're here, all of us, to support all of you because I see your efforts and I've seen what you're doing for this city and I want this city to survive. And I'm feeling from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm gonna make this very easy. I just wanna know, I came here to ask the mayor something. Every time we have a meeting, we get ready to ask him something, he'd get up and leave. You guys are the council members. You cannot get him to sit down to answer questions? I think the mayor personally is incompetent and you guys know he can find a way. He sat up here, he shrugged his head, he didn't understand anything that was going on. You asked about the police department, he said he wanted to throw all that stuff in the garbage and then someone wrote something down for him on a piece of paper. Then he comes back and says he has been talking with the agency. We need the police around here. And everyone here knows if we do go to Auburn, your taxes aren't going up. And a lot of people here, you lose your job. And I don't want that. I mean, this is Pacific, this is nice and quiet and we wanna keep it that way. But if you have the mayor having these special committees, how many special committees have he had? Ten? And what's the resolution so far? You're about to move to Auburn? You gotta do better than that. Just please help us, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
I think you can see Ryan. Yeah, I've spoke many times in front of the council since the beginning of the year, which I've never done before, but when I first saw the things that were going on with the thing I got on my fence last year when he was running for mayor, I could see this was gonna be a train wreck and it's beyond that. But anyway, I'm not really for annexation, but I also trust that the council will do what needs to be done. If that's one of the paths we need to investigate and go partially down and somehow maybe the insurance works out, back off, do what you need to do. But we just need to make sure that if the city can continue to exist where I've lived here 15 years, please make it so. Thank you.
Sheri Kason?
Sheri Kason, 422 Chicago Boulevard South. I'm also on the park board, so I've been part of the city. I've lived here 13 years and was part of the government for about one, just learning how it works. I am opposed to annexation, not full-heartedly, but basically. The one thing I would like to know is why we're not considering more the disincorporation instead of the annexation? Because my understanding is that once we're annexed into Auburn, we're gonna be Auburn forever. But if we are disincorporated and put as part of King County, if we could get our act together, we could reincorporate at some future date in the city of Pacific again. What I do believe that has not been made clear to the people here in Pacific is if you do proceed with the annexation, it's not a clear-cut thing and we do have a voice. According to the law that you read, the 1217 resolution, or whatever this law is, 35.10.217, parentheses two, it is stated in this that you read, Leanne, but the continuation also says, "It becomes effective unless the owners of property in the area proposed to be annexed equal in value to 60% or more of the assessed valuation of the property in the area protest the proposed annexation in writing to the legislative body of this city or town proposing to annex." That's Auburn. "Within 30 days of the adoption of the second resolution." So if Auburn accepts us, if our council proposes and Auburn accepts the proposal and we don't like it, within 30 days, we all have to write something and send it to Auburn. If 60% of us are against it, they can't do it. I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. And I would like, I would also request from the council that they request from both Auburn and King County to have someone come and talk to us about how we would be treated by those two entities. Thank you very much.
Frankly, when I signed to speak, I planned on pleading with the mayor just to back out and save our city and not have it be my way or no way. I want to save the city, I think most others do. We want to save the city, we just gotta figure out the best way to do it. Yes, sir. So let's figure out the best way to do it and do it. I don't want to be part of Auburn. I perceive that many of us in our city have been motivated by the desire to have less control by city officials over our lives. That's my suspicion, that that's undermined the opinion of us. But I would, I would like to remind everybody that if you're under the control of Auburn, the control is gonna be a lot greater. A lot of the needs that some folks I think were trying to rid our city of with the movement that's been going on and everybody's work, if we went to Auburn, I don't think Auburn is the answer. Let's get something that'll work. And I would say also, but I think I would agree with the lady who spoke just before me, about, my opinion anyway, maybe we disincorporate and just be part of the county and then put something together that's what we want to be as citizens of Pacific and not what Auburn wants us to be. Auburn has their plan that they've been going on, it's all laid out, we're not gonna change This is our city, let's somehow come out of all of this with our city being us and let us, as people in this city, do more control of our own lives and have all of those many, many thousands of people in Auburn controlling what happens in our little place. Let's keep control of our city.
Reva Bryan will be next.
I'm Dave Stuckey from 133 470 Southwest, New York City. I've lived in my house since 1973. Been here, remember the city, the city's grown, things, these things change. And I think it's time that we need to hold the city council responsible for part of the problems we have in the city. You removed some of your powers because you believed that we as citizens of the city weren't capable of electing a new mayor which didn't fit, don't rock the bolt mold of the previous mayor or other candidates. To be a riding candidate and to beat both of you should have been an indication of how fed up we were and a wake-up call to you. Our city government is a strong mayor-council form of government where the executive branch is the mayor and the council is the legislative branch. The mayor is responsible for the day-to-day operation and the hiring, the department heads for the council approval. Nowhere does the council be involved in the city employee's day-to-day management. Some of you have crossed that line. What about your ability to manage your ongoing projects and keep them on budget? And how good are you at money managing skills? Why haven't the Stewart Street and the Valentine Street improvements been completed? How many millions of dollars have you been responsible for waiting? Why do our public safety costs exceed those of other cities such as ordering by almost more than $300,000 per year? Have you compared other cities to what we are spending? I think the citizens of Pacific are capable of making good decisions, such as voting good people in office, such as mayors' son and removing corrupt ones. I'm in favor of keeping the city of Pacific and I hold you responsible for seeing to it that these things happen. Thank you.
Reva Bryan, 502 Third Avenue Southeast. I've lived here for 40 years. I was involved in city government here for 30 years. I have never in my entire life seen anything like this. One man and his cohort have taken this city to its knees. This is sad and disgusting and I don't know how you're ever gonna save it other than you need to get him out of here. And I would ask every one of you to donate something to the recall committee because it needs some money to keep this going. But until Si Sun is out of this town, you're gonna have nothing, absolutely nothing. And so probably your best bet would be to annex to Auburn. Thank you.
Mind everybody that discussions related to the annexation. Hello, Larry Dixon? Karen Wilman? I don't see anybody moving.
Anita Sprague, 1-520-3777, specific. My question to you is, and I've heard you say this several times, that P Lewis won all of Pacifics, is that what you said? He won't, if Pierce County went back to here, he wouldn't make the city of Pacific, he wouldn't go to Auburn. Right. Because once I talked to Peter, I knew he was already mayor, but I talked to him after he became mayor and he made them, we asked him one time about maybe annexing because of our area, Pierce County, and some of us at that time were trying to get it. He said that he would not want anything to do with Pacific except for the South End because of the revenue. And so I feel this is it. If he doesn't get all of Pacific, he won't take all of it. And so when you said that, that's why I questioned that. My other thing, this happened to a quick, two months ago, we talked about insurance and then you talked about civic corporations and all of a sudden, two days, and my understanding, somehow X representant of failure was involved. And then the next day, P Lewis comes out and he wants to annex the city of Pacific. It seems very strange to me how that all happened so quick. Especially if citizens should have been, I think, should have been talking first, you did manage to talk to him about the insurance and the disincorporation, you should have at least took the time to talk to the citizens about annexation.
Gary Van Hee?
Gary Van Hee, 2-5 Papa Avenue, Washington.
Have me use the mic, have me use the mic.
One of the council on doing just a phenomenal job of under very stressful situations, having sat on council for 18 years, I couldn't imagine the sleepless nights that you guys have had and the restless time in dealing with some very unusual and strange situations. So I wanna thank you for doing that. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to walk around Pacific and actually talk to quite a few people about how this annexation and situation in Pacific, and I heard an awful lot of pain. I heard one lady said that, you know, she moved here because it's a small town and she liked the small-town atmosphere and that's what Pacific represents and so annexation to Auburn wouldn't make really sense for her, although being unincorporated in her situation, she has no small town, no town to go to. She'd have to go to King County to get any service. I talked to a gentleman that just moved into a new development a year ago and they have money sitting here in the city of Pacific for lifts on their, on their road to finish their development off and the drainage is horrible because the lift hasn't been done. And the city sits here and the money is sitting here and there's nobody in the planning department that will unload that money so that he can get that done. If we unincorporate, that money goes somewhere and this gentleman and all those people, then they have to go to downtown King County to figure out how they can get that development finished and I just think that's tough. So I don't think these are the only people that are suffering and I think there's a lot of pain out there and I prefer to keep our city and I know that you guys have that in your best interest too. I think our number two best solution from what you've explained to me might be to annex into Auburn or, and then the third thing we don't wanna do as far as I'm concerned is to unincorporate. That would be a disaster.
Kurt Dawn?
I'm 328 Hawthorne, been here for about 19 years. And I agree a lot with what Gary said, I think he sums it up pretty good. Firstly, our family, we're not for annexation, but we're for safety and we're for protecting families, we have children. And we moved down here because of the low traffic, it was quiet, so we heard the trains. You know, I'd like to get that fixed, that train was on the first day. But I just wanna go on record as, let's look for the best option to keep us safe and then keep this small-town atmosphere, just get along. The visitor material is unproductive. There's no reason for it. Just get along, let's talk and let's quit being fodder for the news. Tired of it.
Jeremy Thompson?
Jeremy Thompson, 324 Milwaukee Boulevard, South. As far as annexing or disincorporating, I'm not sure. I came here to get informed tonight. Why, why I think it's a shame that most information that I seem to be getting is from people in the audience. I was hoping to come and get informed by the council more. I have lots of questions, I know you can't answer them all at the council. Don't get me wrong, I know you guys have been working very hard under stressful situations, but things that there should be a list of questions like, what will happen with my kid's school? What will happen with grants that already exist? I know last year, the city engineer, I talked to him, there was a grant to fix Milwaukee Boulevard. There's a lot of talk about public safety and other grants being finished tonight. Well, you know, I have to walk down to the city parks with my daughter down there, there's no sidewalks, there's these big brown trucks and other trucks that go down in the industrial area flying down there. That's a public safety issue. That you guys have the grant money already existing to fix along with the drainage, you know, along Milwaukee Boulevard. So what will happen to that grant money if, you know, we're not Pacific anymore? So what did happen to that grant money? It was a year ago. You know?
Linda White?
Linda White, 116 East Gate Avenue South, as opposed to 116 East Gate Avenue North, which has given me a whole lot of headaches and everybody else on my street. Annexation, even though I don't know a whole lot about what it would do for us or not do for us, I'm leaning toward it. I've lived here 37 years. I haven't come to a whole lot of meetings in the 37 years, but I can say that unequivocally there has been much contention between previous mayors, people in the city, city council forward the 37 years. This isn't been the first and if we continue as a city, it sure won't be the last. I don't know what it is about this town. Little Algonah doesn't air its dirty laundry, doesn't seem to have any. Cause I've heard people say, well, it's cause we're a small town and our mayor is our neighbor and there's people that are for the mayor, there's people against the mayor, each succeeding administration. I think that's the main reason I'm for annexation. It's been depressing and embarrassing, frustrating to have year in and year out, constant turmoil and bickering. People are not happy, no matter who's in, pass the time. And so I think being annexed to a bigger town, we won't have any more little frogs and big ponds, vice versa. We won't know them as personally. And we might actually get some stuff done for us and paid for, like, I don't know, this water thing of, what do you call it, where the water doesn't run down your curbs anymore? Storm drain thing. I know I've been paying on that plus everybody else for over 10 years. But my neighbor still has to put sandbags in the front of his yard and I still have to climb over mud puddles inches deep to get my mail. But I'm paying for that good old storm drain thing. And then there's always the paving situation, like First Avenue East, which is off of my road. I think I lived here about 35 years and they finally did a beautiful job of paving and it was beautiful, so smooth, I loved it. And then a few months later, they tore the whole thing up and put in something, water culverts or electricity or something, so we're right back to where we were. But that was good for eight months. My question is, maybe with Auburn, if we annex, we might actually get some stuff that benefits some of us. But mostly it's because of the antagonism and the arguments and the fighting that's been going on for 37 years and I'm really set up with it all, I really am. So I'm hoping a bigger town, we won't have that anymore. It'll be nice to live here. I mean, it'll still be our community, you know, it's just a name change, basically. And maybe you see more taxes, but who knows? Don't know. But that's where I'm at. And I know I'm a minority, but I guess I'm entitled to my opinion. Thank you.
Hang on, Peter Maroon, 218 Beute Avenue South. And I'm here because, well, I'm just tired of the media circus and the infighting and hearing all this strong, you know, it's not where I'm at. When I first came to Pacific, I used to walk through here, I work at the plant to the north, but I came through here and I thought, what a nice peaceful town, you know, and people were friendly and everybody seemed to get along. The police are right there and it was safe and secure. And I travel a lot and so I just go right down to the police station, fill out a report. Well, one day I come home early, there's a policeman in my driveway and he goes, what are you doing here? And I'm like, wow, that's pretty good, you know? And I proved that I'm who I'm supposed to be and thank God it was putting him Christmas light, so he kinda believed it. But the convenience of having the police, I can't express enough the safety and the security. I used to live on the South Hill. When I lived in unincorporated Pierce County, what happened is as the police staff dwindled, crime went right through the roof. You know, evil prospers when good men do nothing. And I had two cars stolen and I said, well, that's not, you know, I gotta come to a place where there's some security, especially if I'm an investment in community. So my hat's off to the police and what they've been going through is just phenomenal. But what I wanna say is, you know, this is a land of laws and not men and what I see here is that this is nothing but men and egos, maybe women too, but my point is, is that if we don't get along, we're only as strong as our government. And I'm a failure at that because the only reason I'm here is because of the annexation, which I'm totally opposed to. I don't believe in it. I believe we'll be the redheaded stepchild of Auburn. And when I see Auburn, I'm not really that impressed with all the cameras and the crime, my God. Take the drive-through to Auburn, see what you're gonna become. Anyway, like I said, I'm just kinda tired of the media circus. I wish you guys would get along. One thing I'd like, one message I'd like to leave you guys though is to post on to your resume, well, yeah, I just own the city of Pacific. Well, if I'm hiring you, that's not something I'm gonna be a part of. Thank you, bye.
Karen Barnes. Karen Barnes. Jean Fancher.
Must be next to the last.
Jean Fancher, 37248 55th Avenue South. I've been coming to the council meetings for several years now and have also started a blog. We held some voters forums. We tried to get folks informed. And as part of the blog, I put out a quick survey asking what people preferred the citizens did, preferred the council did. So I said I would present the results. And the answers from just the people in the Pacific News Readers List, which is about ninety people, and a few people from the blog brought in copies. We only had five or six responses, so it's not a lot. But Do Nothing was fifth and sixth, two and three people. Annex to Auburn was the first choice for three people and the second choice for three people. Annex or merge with another entity was the second choice for two and the third choice for three. Disincorporate was the third, fourth, and fifth choice for one, one, and two people. So so far, those aren't doing too good. Switch to the council manager form of government. Three people indicated that is their first choice. One is the third choice. Three is the fourth choice. One is the fifth choice. And do something else, the write-ins. There were three votes there as first choice, one fourth, one sixth. The write-ins were asking Mayor Sun to resign immediately and the city and council appoint the city council president as mayor, then obtain insurance, then have a general election to switch to council manager form of government. The second write-in was anything, just get his eye out and try again. I asked people if they would serve on the council if the city didn't have insurance. Nobody said yes. Everybody said no. They identified themselves as five people who live in Pacific, three who work or have a business in Pacific, and five who voted in Pacific. So most of it's people who live, work in Pacific, vote here. But everybody is split. And we're pointing fingers at each other to who's to blame. Every step along the way, people have made choices that maybe are not the best choices. Let's fire this person. Let's not hire that person. Make a presentation to the council that isn't vetted, contract, lawsuit. It boils down to, we're not being very good players. We didn't learn what we were supposed to learn in kindergarten. Play nice, share, talk it out, and not try and have your own way all the time. So now, it looks like we're at a conundrum. About four seconds. I say, you guys do the best you can. If you believe in God, pray to Him. If you don't believe in God, that's okay. I believe in nature and doing what is the best thing for everyone. The golden rule. So do unto others as you would have others do unto you. And please, give everybody here a break. They're not trying to purge you. They're not trying to railroad you. It's just where we're at. And I wish you all well. Thank you.
Mark Gough. Mark Gough.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. I haven't talked to you for a while. Good to see you all here today. I want to say three things, hopefully in order. I have notes, but I'm gonna just do this. Number one, I'm saying this to you guys. Thank you for stepping up to leadership. Over the years, I've talked with many of you and many of your predecessors and said, "Please lead." Thank you. It's hard, and I appreciate you doing it. I am so glad to hear people here with very strong feelings who have been nice to each other and listened to each other. And so many have said, "We're trusting you. Thank you for stepping up." LeAnn, I heard it in your voice, talking about annexation isn't easy. Definitely not. I don't know what the directions will be. I commend you for your leadership. I'm concerned that too often in this town, and I appreciate it Linda's wife's comments. I've been here twenty years and this is just the latest symptoms. You want me to name the names? We won't do that, huh? This has gone on and on and on. Too often, somehow, community and city government have gotten confused. The community of Pacific will continue. The hundred-and-three-year tradition will live. The stories of the interurban that goes way back and all the rest will continue. Community is here. I kind of wonder if freed up from the ever-increasing craziness of governance, what your skills and gifts could do for community in this place? That could be kind of cool to see, to be freed up to do that. Here are my prayers. Our church has been praying for this town and the direction that lay ahead. I would like to ask in my last couple of seconds, please express my appreciation to all of those on the county level, city level, insurance company level, boy, that's a hard one, and all the other ones who have been talking to you, counseling you, supporting you, advising you. Please express my, I think our appreciation for the hard work that everybody's doing. Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Mott.
Hi, thank you. Chris Mott, 118 Second Place Southwest.
Pick up the mic. Is this better?
I moved here in 2008. I then went to Moses Lake to work at REC Silicone Facility as a painter. And there was a shooting at a church. I wasn't here. I was here. My wife and daughter were here. And then, a couple of years ago, there was another shooting at this house at the corner of Tacoma that was rivaled with twelve or fourteen bullets. And then, another older neighbor of mine, somebody busted into his house with a weapon. So three of us, in the past four years, we're losing police officers. We're not hiring any new officers. And it seems like this gentleman was saying, law enforcement's important. There's been a lot of gun violence here. I never had to think I'd live in a city with gun violence, and it's here. So I would like to say and conclude that in the interest of keeping jobs for fellow officers and to protect people like us, maybe the mayor has to go so we can get somebody that will fill these positions to keep us safe. Thank you.
Aaron Richards.
Aaron Richards, 729 Third Avenue. I'd just like to say, this is my third time being here, if I can do, speak with the mayor. And he likes to run away, so that's not very good. I'm kind of so-so when it comes to, you know, annexing in the city of Auburn or annexing to the city of Auburn. There's pros and cons. I'm more for keeping the city of Pacific, obviously. I think that it'd be best if we were in control of our own destiny. Kind of concerned, you know, what Auburn's intentions would be. You know, are they gonna replace the city park with toxic waste? Not for, we don't know. But I do believe that what that other gentleman said about, you know, those are the Pacific folks. They aren't the Auburn folks, even though we go to their schools and we do all that sort of stuff. Think I might make a lot of enemies here, but I think that we all have a responsibility. We all need to hold ourselves accountable for what has gone on in our city this past year. City Council, I know I've said this before, but the perception of Pacific isn't so good with the community and it's not just what's been going on these last, you know, couple of months. We're talking, you know, talking to friends who say, "Oh, you live in Pacific? You mean the town where you get pulled over when you go one mile over the speed limit?" Or, you know, all this other stuff that's going on. And I'm not here to name names right now. I think I already made my point clear a little while ago. But the perception that the citizens have, not just in this city but around, is exactly why Saifun got elected with his key buzz phrase, "Stop corruption." And I know a lot of us, not including myself, bought into it. And I had suspicions on them from the beginning, but we bought into it because of our perception of the city. So I think that's where you guys are trying to be accountable. I think we're trying to be accountable too, because I look around and I see more people than I've ever seen at one of these events. I go to city council meetings as often as I can. And I think this front row right here probably wouldn't even be filled at a regular city council meeting. So we're all up in arms and we're all angry right now, like, "Hey, what's going on with this city? Well, what have you been doing for the last year?" So I'm sorry, I'm your neighbor, but I hope not to make an enemy. Take personal responsibility for it too. But I think that we need to pull ourselves together and really learn a lesson from this. And hopefully that is the big thing that we can take away from this. And that, stop being apathetic about what's going on in your community. And stop leaving it up to these guys to make their decisions for you, you know? I think that it would be better if I saw all you guys at the city council meeting and we filled that place up so much that it's all the way down the hallway, not just when something bad is happening. So I'm like sixty percent, let's keep Pacific. Forty percent, let's go to Auburn and see if we can get something done. For those of you who are still supporting Saifun, I'd just like to say one thing. I live right next to the train tracks, as all of us do. We probably like all sandwich in between the train tracks. Man, I hate those trains, but do you really expect that guy to argue on our behalf to the business owners of those trains that come by? They're gonna laugh? No. They're gonna laugh at him, say, "You're Saifun." We're not gonna listen to you. The guy has no power. He's ineffective. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Herbert Bolton. Herbert? Heber, sorry.
Didn't appoint Ken Barnett to any commission, did they?
No.
But they got him on at a three spot.
That's because the mayor thinks we're gonna appoint him again.
My name is Heber Bolton, and I live at 406 Chicago Boulevard South. And I've lived here for twenty-five years now. And I've learned to love this little town. And thirteen years ago, I started going to the senior center. And to me, the senior center is my life. And I would say Auburn will not keep that senior center. If we annex, it's gone. And I am definitely against annexation. I just pray that you folks will do everything you can except letting us be annexed. And if I could have any idea though, I know LeAnn here and I'll talk with her about things that we might do. But anyway, I love the people in Pacific and I watched the whole place with a lot of interest. And some of you folks know me because I ride that twice-a-go round town. But it's a lovely little town.
That's the end of the audience that signed in on the sheet. I can ask if there's any other additional people that would like to speak at this time? Just come forward and identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Shirley Shemansky. I live at 634 Shunik Avenue South. And I would like to better understand what the insurance problem is. Why we can't get insurance. I still don't understand what happened that caused that problem that we have to go to this.
Any other speakers who'd like to have a comment at this time? Please do come forward, identify yourself.
Audrey Prichank, 703 Third Avenue Southeast. My concern that I'm seeing here tonight is, just like this lady, she wants to know about the insurance. And if people, if you'd be coming to the meetings, this has been going on for six months. It's nothing new. And you can't wait until there's a crisis and then come to a meeting. You have to come to the council meetings and learn about this stuff. And because this has been going on. I mean, we've been threatened and it's been in the newspaper and it's been on TV. It's not just happening. And if you come to the council meetings, then you learn why. Thank you.
Bernadine Harrison, 1574 Thornton Avenue. If we were to switch to the council, Strong Council, is it Strong Council?
Council Manager.
Council Manager. If we were to switch to that, doesn't the mayor go away? Okay. I just feel that it would be a good thing to do right now and hopefully the insurance company would work with us on that. And if they did, then we could go forward from there. And I, again, with everybody else, I'd like to thank you for the work you're doing. It's very difficult.
Any other comments?
My name is Carla Bykirk, and I'm here in 2010. And I bought the one over on the Third Avenue, 302 Third Avenue. Me and my husband does not want this annex. We want to stay here in Pacific. We like Pacific. Don't care for the cars spinning around our side streets, but we like Pacific. Thank you.
Mary Dorns, 328 Hawthorne Southeast, eighteen-year resident. And I want to commend you guys for stepping up and participating in the process that many of us, we take for granted someone is doing it. And I just want to say that I'm, I don't think anyone wants Pacific to go away, but I think we're at a crossroads. And I think we have to decide what is the best option for January 2nd when there's a fire in our house or there's a break in our community. What's gonna happen January 2nd? And if that means we need to be annexed to Auburn to ensure that we're gonna get proper response time, I think that's what we need to do. And, you know, if we're part of Auburn, it doesn't mean we have to be stepchildren. It means we can run for mayor of Auburn. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there and I think there's a lot of services. And I think there's just a little bit less drama and corruption in the bigger cities.
Anyone else who'd like to speak?
David Passenger, 627 Milwaukee Boulevard. So I just wanted to comment on another side of this. Being a city employee for another city myself, I have a strong support for small-city public works people, that's a little of the police departments. People that, when you have a small city and you have these type of people that serve you, you have people that really do care. There's a lot more caring going on here than if you're working for Seattle. I've been there. Or Bellevue. I've been there. there, or Bellevue, I've been there. I have worked for a small city bigger than you. So I would say that one of the things you want to consider, when it comes to annexation, we, I think, I agree with this lady over here, I think we have to consider every option. All options have to be considered, because the time for, uh, trying to come to some sort of resolution on a last-minute thing, it gets gone. We don't have that, uh, we don't have that luxury anymore. What we have is, we have a community that, uh, well, it's, uh, you know, it's been a crash diet. I've talked to people that have been in politics for a lot of years around the state, including our insurance code. And nobody's quite ever seen anything like this. Uh, I know we've had a reputation with a lot of people of not being the best political machine in the world, but guess what? Auburn isn't either. Neither is Washington DC or whatever. So, you know, when you get government, you get what you get. But some of the people tonight have pointed out the fact that if you want to make a difference in your town, you've got to get involved. You can't sit on the sideline and say, "What happened?" This is what's happening right now, man. I've been going to a lot of city council meetings. I've worked, unfortunately, with the recall, I, I hate to say that, because I, I don't like to see anything fail, or anybody. But when it comes to our city, our livelihood, and the fact that we have families here, my wife and I bought a house here to retire here, okay? I'm working my way to retirement. My neighbor over here bought his first house here. These are people that are just regular folks, that just want a break to be able to work in a positive direction. Thank you very much, City Council, each and every one of you. I've had an opportunity to get to know you over the last six months, the people that worked on the recall committee. And let's just do this. Stay involved, don't give up hope, and keep moving in a direction that's gonna benefit your neighbor, because your neighbor's you.
Any other comments from the citizens?
My name's Howard Richardson. After listening to a number of these people, I think that I would suggest to you people, that most people like some of the things in Pacific. And it sounds to me from some of the testimony I hear, that they like it better than Auburn. I don't think Auburn has one thing offer us that's better than what we have here. What's gonna happen to our senior center? What's gonna happen to thirty employees? What's gonna happen to our police department? What's gonna happen to our identity? And what's gonna happen when it comes to representation? We're sitting out here in a little corner of a big population.
I smell smoke.
And ever getting a mayor out of this corner is gonna be next to impossible, or getting a legislator out of this corner. So, directly, if these people like the police department, and they like the water department, if you like senior center, I do not understand why we're gonna give it away. I think we have to tighten our belts up a little bit, maybe work a little harder, and keep this city. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna close, uh, comments.